At the call to order for council regular meeting is September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Start with the goal call.
President Lyman?
Here.
Vice President Presser?
Here.
Councilmember Delizio?
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Taylor is absent. Manager Devenus?
Here.
Please note this meeting is being recorded and please talk into your microphone so it makes it easier for the recording because we're wearing that. Thank you.
And all rise for the pleasure of allegiance remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Um, Mr. Stevens providing the invitation.
Almighty God, we thank you for the blessing of this day and for this opportunity to serve our community. God has given us wisdom and a lot of good deals. I wanted to be there. We do the same. Amen.
We had a copy of this evening's agenda that was in the packages.
Check.
Um, and there was no revised package sent out from originals to one that's offered tonight. So I have a motion for approval of the agenda of September fifteenth.
Okay.
Blish by Council Ferguson, second by Council Delizio. Have changes or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion's been approved. Second item is the approval of our minutes from the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one workshop, regular meeting, combination of last month and the summer season. Motion by Council Presser, second by Council Stevens. Anyone have changes or corrections to the minutes? Please present. Hearing none, all those in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's been approved. Thank you. Third item is public input. Anyone wishing to address council this evening, please rise and state your name and address. And we have no media in attendance. Continuing with item four on our agenda. The announcements, Mr. Devenus?
Uh, planning permission is scheduled to meet on Monday, October fourth at seven P. M. uh, here in council chambers. Next for our council meetings are October sixth, the workshop, and October twentieth, the regular meeting, at seven thirty P. M. here in council chambers. Perk is scheduled to meet September twenty-second, um, at eight A. M. uh, that would be via Zoom. Perk, uh, summer send-off concert will be held, um, September eighteenth in Centennial Park. And after that concert, there will be a movie in the park, uh, on, uh, on the eighteenth as well. The Hatfield Museum and Rural Society is scheduled to meet on their Facebook Live page on September twenty-eighth at seven P. M.
Anyone have? Anyone have additions facing like the highlight?
The continuation of the strategic, uh...
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, this evening, Borough Council held a meeting, committee meeting that was advertised. Uh, that meet was continued till October sixth at six thirty P. M.
Okay. We'll move forward with our reports from committee chairs. Anyone have information to share with council this evening? There was a police report in the package for public safety. This was a couple minor incidents, or at least they turned out to be minor, thank goodness. There's no darts players were hitting one another with any pointed objects, but, uh, that seemed to be resolved. Anyone have any questions to pass along to the lieutenant or police department? Just wondering, uh, is this maybe appropriate time for a question? If we've had any reports or ideas from HTMA on flows or what any of that means to the borough? How was their operation impacted? I mean, this is the first question.
Uh, there, we have not communicated with them since March, but I will. Uh, our engineers filed a report, uh, of analysis of flows, uh, over the past year. That information was wanting to be brought forth during the utilities committee meeting process.
Anything else? We do have, uh, a committee list, committee meeting list that will be coming out, uh, through my here if everybody's, who's requested have their calendars handy, take a look at those.
I did receive some information that, uh, some committee members won't be available next week. So, uh, we don't really have anything scheduled to start next week, but, uh, I will get a schedule out by, by Friday. Looking at the, uh, get any schedules, uh, for, uh, we've got twenty-seven. All right?
And we'll continue then with our managers' reports.
So, in your package is the manager's report. Uh, one of the few things that's, uh, actually new under, uh, land use and development is the North Pennant Duff's real center, uh, submitted a preliminary, uh, sub, uh, plan for, uh, for subdivision. And it will be under review, uh, at the October four planning commission and at the, uh, October sixth Borough Council, uh, meeting. So that's something new in the, uh, land use and development. All the other items, uh, are pretty much ongoing. Uh, we're looking, uh, I did have a conversation with Bennett, the developer at Bennett's Court. And, uh, they're running into same problems that many people are running into, uh, supply chain and labor issues, uh, due to the hand down. So he's got, once the, we submit his plan, but he just hasn't gotten around to finishing some of the things that were required for him to do then. Um, Toby, Billy, um...
Hey, Mike, I'm sorry. The, the North Pennant Industrial, where does that happen?
On, um, Park Street. You know where we, uh, our, we rented space, um, for our offices?
Yeah.
That's the North Pennant Industrial there.
Oh, okay.
Uh, they submitted a plan for a piece of property they have across the street, to subdivide these properties they have across the street. So, uh, the Toby Billy, um, as, uh, was noted during the, uh, strategic planning, the, the, the Toby Billy coordinator update for our council that there was a significant amount of linkages that they have worked together, had work to, uh, collect. And, uh, they're making great headway on that. The electric customer portal has gone on under, uh, is going to be going under a, uh, a rehab. Uh, the, the provider for that, uh, worked with, uh, the municipal power, uh, to bring a lot of concerns both, uh, to redevelop that portal. And, uh, Jamie and staff and I have sat in on, uh, a demonstration of that. And that, they're looking to roll that out once, if, is the, uh, approval for that rollout. Uh, one of the things that will impair is the, uh, residents are gonna have to re-sign into the, the whole of the portal. So we'll get those instructions as they come around.
Do you have a PowerPoint or something you can share with us?
Uh, I will ask IP keys for that. So the, uh, available projects, East Lincoln Avenue Bridge, uh, replacement project. We get a very significant, uh, step, leap forward today as the arches, uh, for the bridge were all put in place all today, all, all once today. And several end walls were installed as well, uh, for the, uh, for the structure. So they had a very significant dent. Um, it's, it's amazing when you, when you start picking holes in ground and you can't envision what it's gonna look like. Now, if you want to go down and take a look of what, something you may not see for another hundred years, is that those arches, because once they get covered up, there's no reason to go down there. But, uh, it was quite, uh, quite a dreadful day down there on, on East Lincoln Avenue. As stated, uh, previously, the, uh, P M E A programs, uh, have been completed and payment request was approved. Uh, the roadway resurfacing has been rewarded and construction, uh, has, will be delayed until, uh, beginning of October.
Any idea of a start date on that?
Uh, we're probably looking, quietly, yes, right now, I'd say it's probably gonna be about the second of October.
And as, uh, Steve noted, um, to me today, that the stormwater portion of J Drive was completed today. Uh, to this year's, for, and, and we're gonna do some, uh, extension that next year, a continuation of that next year. Uh, P M E A, uh, update, um, the, um, office newsletter was attached and the, uh, Public Power website is up and running. Jamie, Steve and I attended the, uh, P M, P M E A conference at State College last week. Um, and there's a lot of good news at State College, uh, and the P M E, P M E A group. And the benefits of hiring a full-time venture director are, uh, uh, becoming very evident.
Hey, Mike?
Yeah?
With, uh, with the R A A ramps, the resurfacing and that, can we get all the sidewalk issues taken care of?
That's what the latest been right now. So we have somebody coming in to do our portion to get the rest of it replaced.
Okay. So we, we're just fixing that, there were several residents, if I'm correct, that there was a question, uh, that doing work and that's what we're gonna finish up.
Yeah.
Now we get back to our...
Yes. Hey, Junior?
Yeah.
Uh, the AMP behind the meter, uh, project, the, uh, right speaking project, uh, as we met today, uh, Jamie and Steve and I with, uh, Roy Scandell of AMP and, uh, Robbie Povell of Power, sure they were, they're in visiting the sites. Um, their goal is to have us, uh, operating in November. So, uh, they're, they're pushing towards that. We, there was a couple, uh, pieces of equipment that they had to actually order. Power Secure has, uh, a whole vast, uh, supply chain. So because there were some issues with getting some pieces of equipment, AMP went and purchased some of the equipment they needed directly from the supply that Power Secure has. And they're gonna put up a reclosure on our pole right outside our, uh, Public Power facility, uh, the connection pole, uh, where all the conduits are strung, strung the generator. Uh, they're gonna put up a, a reclosure, not the reclosure that we actually wanted, but they're gonna put it up for now to get the project underway. And then when our reclosure shows up, they will, uh, they will have it replaced. And they'll take their reclosure back to somewhere else. So to keep that moving forward, that's how we resolve that issue. Um, as I said earlier, uh, take a look at those shirts, let me know your slides, because AMP wants you to wear those shirts and from Power Secure, I have the ribbon cut. Okay? So...
We're gonna have that on, on social media and, you know, detail that, that, so that we're doing that and all that, you know, for residents?
We can do that. So...
I think it's a great opportunity since we're doing this to help, you know, let's really celebrate with residents, so, you know, start curtailing some of the negative, uh, you know, conversations out there, but why would we apply electricity to the world? You know, it seems like a pain to shut down all the time. This is one of our big counterintuits for them, so we should celebrate, get that out there and make sure everyone's aware of it.
So the AMI system, an update to the AMI system, the AMI system is up and functioning. Uh, and, uh, enables the utility building coordinator to monitor electric metering systems daily. Uh, through that we find out when, uh, there's a problem in an area and/or a particular meter, or when someone is camping with them. So, uh, that, that, uh, new AMI system has been very effective. Uh, it also, uh, has created a more accurate billing system. So, uh, that enables us to do diagnostic services of connections as well. So, uh, the AMI system is up and fully integrated and operating, and we've been operating on the one tolling platform for several months. Uh, the Perk update was...
We have a question. Are we able to, you know, I know we talked about more accurate billing. Are we able to, you know, maybe after the first year, basically come back and say, you know, here's what the delta was between what the billing was before now, based on the...
Well, we, we would be able to do a sampling of that. I'm not sure if we can pinpoint exactly every dollar that was recovered. Um, the rule of thumb that AMP and the member communities that have put in AMI systems through AMP have seen about a four percent increase in revenue.
Okay.
Uh, from, from the previous year on the same amount of usage.
Okay. See, I, I think we need to, as long as we know kind of what the benefit of it was, so, yeah. I'm not sure people wanna realize they're paying a four percent more than they're paying.
Well, and we, this is one of the discussions at P M E A's last week. Um, several of P M E A members also, um, are in the water business, you know, in more, uh, rural areas. Uh, they, they own their electric system enders. Uh, water meters tend to slow down significantly more than electric meters do. To the, and whereas they should be replaced every, every ten years, all right? Uh, electric meters slow down, but not to the rate of waters. So the rule of thumb on electric meters is twenty years. And we were past the twenty-year threshold of our meter replacement. And if you recall, a lot of those meters were not brand new when they were installed, they were refurbished meters. So, uh, we had run the life cycle of our metering system, um, and updating it to the whole AMI system at this time with the value that AMP brought to the project. And with what we went forward. But that, that four percent revenue is an estimate of what AMP and the member communities have identified through the time that it's been in place. But we'll go back and look as well.
Okay. No, I'm just thinking for budget, because next year we might want to accommodate their account for just one four percent of electric revenue, you know, it may help our number.
So, um, the Perk update was in your package as well, all right? And, and we see, uh, Lindsay would like to, I believe, have, uh, Adam, uh, on, on that movie night was in there as well, that movie night on the eighteenth. So, you know, she had asked, uh, what I support and I said yes, and, uh, and she moved forward to take care of that. Uh, without the Saturday, Saturday night, there'll be the concert in the park. And that's also after, for, for Salters, the Angfest had Salters on Saturday. So there's a lot going on downtown on Saturday, and the contractor is going to work on the bridge. Has been asked to operate and remove all his materials far enough away from the parking lot where he stages for the weekend, uh, so that Salters can use the parking lot and speed the public park to clean up the area best they can, uh, even though that we're still opening the bridge on East Lincoln Avenue.
How? How was, uh, Salters grand opening?
How was it there? Uh, downtown?
It was very nice, very nice. It was not well attended, but, uh, it was, uh, it was very nice, you know, uh, great building there, they did a great job of rebuilding and, uh, retaining a lot of the historic character of the building, which I think is important, too. Uh, but, uh, it was a great looking show and made up there. I think it's a fun, typical trip there.
Was, uh, chamber representation there?
Uh, Gene Wyatt was there, most of the, uh, some of the, maybe in the back, uh, later. Frank is wearing two hats.
Today at the Indian Valley Chamber Board meeting, he says that, um, he wasn't able to attend the revit party, but he went in and he talked to, uh, Jay and extended that, um, possibly Jay and, uh, Indian Valley Chamber can do, um, for what we can do during this time, a business partner, upstairs.
Great ways for the...
Uh, yeah, downstairs or even upstairs, uh, files that was brought up at the Indian Valley Chamber meeting today about, um, the commitment that the Chamber made to Hatfield, of course, to be done in Hatfield. So that was one of the things that came up and they did attend and talked to them.
And I did talk to Jay today, right there in the back, what he was doing was a little cleanup of the property in preparation for the test. He did say a special big thank you to Hatfield Borough for everything they've done to, you know, allow him to open up where he has.
Oh. They had to put some damage to, in the, in the...
I, I don't believe he had any damage. I could be wrong, but I haven't heard anything. Well, I'm almost made aware of any damage that he had to stake. Um, it seems like it closed the other way.
Yeah, and sort of wore it, you run up to the door, but you come in.
Uh, they did remove a lot of things from outside, uh, so that they weren't free, uh, outdoor furnishings for someone else downstream. So, 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 uh, they were aware, they, they, they knew of a, a potential for flooding. Uh, we, we did reach out to several business owners that have been flooded in the past and told them, uh, it's been a significant event. Um, they, they did move some of their furniture, sort of, like I said, it didn't flood downstream. And some of the other businesses that did, did as much as they could, still had things float away and are still retrieving. But to answer your question, I did not defend that. I was, uh, not defined for the case.
And Jay, uh, was very, uh, he was disappointed that you weren't the one to attend, but he did mention you and commended you on, had everything we did, and I'll put that, I'll just hold on. It was appreciated.
From bringing businesses, it is for the borough, uh, it's been, uh, something new. And I, I spoke at P M E A last week, and they, they asked some questions about how to start and, and told about that. The, the list of thirty items that the general candidate, my first time on the job. Uh, and what's really, what's really led us to the strategic planning, that's, that's definitely, uh, carrying on of the strategic planning that we do. So, and one of those was encouraging businesses to, to open up there and, and working with them to facilitate that. Uh, going forward, I just wanted to let you know that there was a, uh, Mall Conference was, uh, still there in the state of state, uh, on the next ever conference. Items of interest, the Hatfield Museum and Rural Society grand opening, and also there's an education for, uh, directly to Borough Council. So, uh, we'll give that ad read as well, and, uh, look for, uh, eight... All right? Uh, there is a, a, uh, continuation of the, uh, items of interest. Uh, ma- many of you, uh, may have known me, I'm a former manager in Landscap. Uh, we passed away last year at an hour celebration of, uh, of length, uh, for, for leaving this weekend. And his, his, uh, way back here announced that the Borough Council, he went, newly, you're playing it, and also was, uh, was, uh, sent out, bit of a former county borough association as well. And then, uh, the last item, uh, Liquid Fuels Review Letter, uh, that Kate, uh, mentioned. And, uh, Diane showed her value again, uh, with, uh, the work she does with Liquid Fuels. So that's my report, Derek, and what he's concerned.
How was that number very difficult to raise up to this point? You know, I'm...
Well, that's what, that's the balance, uh, that's in the Liquid Fuels account, at two hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. Uh, and remember, there was a carryover, so that, that is what was in the account. I believe this year's contribution was in the seventy-eight thousand dollars. But, uh, I'll have to go back and look and see what's the balance. That was for the twenty-twenty year. So, uh, I'll have to go back and look and see what the, uh, balance is now.
No worries. I mean, we'll get to it with the budget proposition, so I was curious.
Reason I thought this was significant is that Liquid Fuels has to be spent on certain streets in certain ways in certain times. And the fact that you got a clean buy is really attributed to the fact that boroughs feel in place and the Dian's keeping good records of that. So, if, if you had spent some money wrong, do you have to pay the, the Liquid Fuels fund back from, from your general rent? That's pretty good.
And one of the things that was, uh, the one year when we trended and we moved, uh, from one banking institution to another, and we gave up interest on our accounts for no fees. One of the accounts that we can't do that on is Liquid Fuels. You have to have entry money for it. So we, the, the bank worked with us to resolve that issue and, and they made note of it, uh, Liquid Fuels made note of it, that we went, uh, a lot of places don't catch that. So, uh, but that was, it's nice to see, you know, when you get watered from, 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 from that part.
Uh, I'm sorry, I might have interrupted you. Apologize when you were talking about, uh, Lindsay's memorandum that, uh, she, in addition to the, uh, Ruby, that we want to hold the Halloween happy walkthrough event again. And she has that proposed for Friday, October twenty-ninth, from five to seven here in the complex.
It was very well received last year, so I'll continue that.
She's got a green light to do that. No, that, that's not formally necessary, but she's got it. Any other questions for the manager? Continue with, uh, Assistant Manager Report.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, my report was in your packets this evening, and again, I will continue to apologize that mine, that is to you gentlemen. Uh, I apologize for that. So, uh, first in the Assistant Manager's report was, uh, the Orchard Lane Forest Way C D B G project. I wanted to note that, uh, we did have a pre-construction meeting. Uh, it does look like the project was, uh, proposed to start in October. Uh, that might be pushed back a little bit. Um, we know with getting some restoration work done on the road, we're kinda, kinda, gonna cut it close. But, uh, unfortunately, it's what's going on in the world today, where it's really hard for the contractors to get materials, the pipe that they need for the project is, uh, backordered. So just push the start date, date back to, uh, October. So hopefully that can come in in the next, uh, several weeks and we can get that project started. Along with that project, I wanted to let you know that we do have all the signed agreements back from the residents for the private laterals. Uh, there are three, uh, that were one hundred percent yes, signed their agreements and returned it. Two of them definitely needed to replace it, so they are one hundred percent doing that. And there was one that was on the fence maybe, and she decided to also replace her lateral. So she did send her agreement in and it is signed, and all those residents where we... So, she did send her agreement in, and it is signed, and all those residents where we turned signed agreements from, uh, the manager's office. So, they have that, and they are understanding, um, of the lien process that would be in place if they do not pay the payment upfront, uh, when the project is complete. Moving on, uh, wanted to bring to your attention again, just notice it's going to come up before our next meeting, the Liberty Bell Trail feasibility study public meeting. This is going to be held September twenty-ninth, uh, six-thirty to eight-thirty P M. At the Hatfield Township Municipal Building, which is nineteen fifty school road. God bless you.
Thank you.
We just had a, uh, meeting yesterday, uh, talking about this, and I, I really can't push it enough on, uh, our website and sending things to Lindsay every day of how really organizing great that this public meeting is going to be. Um, there's stations set up around, there's so much input that, uh, businesses, people that live in the community, uh, people that travel through the community can just go and, you know, take some time out of their day. Where do they want to see the trail? Where do they want to see the connections? What amenities do they want to see on the trail? Um, as part of that night, Mike and myself will be there, along with Aaron Feber, the Township Manager, and there's a station for us where residents can ask us questions about the trail. You can talk about the history of the trail, and we can just kind of give our insights of the whole process, uh, what's taking place and what we're looking to you to move forward. Of course, uh, this study is eventually going to get us shovelled in the ground, and we're hoping that this is the backbone to us putting a grant in, uh, in the future to, you know, get funding for, uh, the trail to be connected from North Wales, uh, Upper Glanad, you know, Lansdale, Hatfield, Franconia, Sotterton, you know, all, all the way up. So, uh, if, if you can mark it on your calendars, again, we will push it out through social media. And like we have been, and there is a designated portion on the Borough website just for the Liberty Bell Trail.
Jane, did they talk to the meeting about the virtual meeting room?
Yes, yes, so.
Assistant manager, of course, if you can't attend that?
Yes, so what they, what they had said at the meeting yesterday was that there will be a virtual town hall, like, a, a virtual public meeting space that they were going to offer. They didn't want to push it out too soon to confuse residents who wanted to attend in public. So, I think they were kind of juggling, when is the best way to push out this public meeting room? But the public meeting room, from what they showed us yesterday as sample, is basically like you would, a, a attendant person. You would still be able to do all the stations, you would still be able to, like, pin on a map where you want to see things. You'd still be able to have, have those connections that you could make at the public meeting for those residents that just can't attend, or they don't want to attend due to COVID concerns. So, um, they did talk about that, they said they wanted to wait a little bit longer to push it out, but as soon as we get the release for that, we'll put that up on our website and social media as well for those who want to attend the public meetings, uh, virtually. Sure. Uh, next, I just want to bring to your attention that there will be a three oh nine connector meeting, uh, with Representative Malin Gary's office tomorrow, September sixteenth, that, uh, I will be attending, I believe Mike will be attending as well. Uh, it'll be virtual, and I will give an update on the three oh nine connector, uh, in my next Assistant Manager's Report. Also, uh, I didn't get to add to my report, but I wanted to bring to your attention a few things. On, um, October eighth, the Borough Office will be closed and opening at nine A M. The Borough staff is going to be going through, uh, C P R and A E D training. So, um, we normally open at eight-thirty, so we're going to open a half hour later that day. We'll put it on the, under the announcement section again at the next meeting. But just to bring to your attention that, um, it's for staff going through a certified, uh, C P R and A E D training that, uh, Public Works Director has set up for all of us. That would be staff and Public Works as well. Uh, also, I wanted to let you know that Mike had mentioned we went to, Steve, myself, and Mike went to P M E A last, uh, Thursday, Fri- uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Uh, Hatfield Borough saw, uh, did seek reelection to be on the P M E A Board of Directors, and we were unanimously voted in. So, Hatfield Borough will continue to have a seat on the Board of Directors for, uh, P M E A. And in turn, Hatfield Borough has submitted a letter to AMP, uh, seeking an at-large seat, uh, for, um, AMP on their board. So, right now, currently, Pennsylvania's the second largest represented state, yeah, that's a better way to say it. I was trying to think of a little more, state, uh, state, um, outside of Ohio that is a member of municipality with AMP, and we only have one seat on the board. So, and that's represented by Africa. So, Hatfield Borough suggested last year that they would be interested in obtaining a seat to give Pennsylvania two seats at the table. Unfortunately, the election didn't go well last year. Well, we're going to try again this year. Uh, it was talked about at P M E A, uh, Diane, the Executive Director of P M E A, has already sent out a letter, uh, encouraging all P M E A members to register for the conference and to vote for Hatfield Borough, so I will give you an update on that, uh, come, uh, October for my Assistant Manager's Report. So, that's it for me, if you have any questions.
Uh, excuse me, Jane.
Yeah.
Uh, you were, uh, spoke all time about that portal in the middle of Hatfield.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, did you present it to, to other board members of the activity that you don't commit?
What, oh, being able to use, use the parking lot? Yeah, and we talked about, that was something that, I'm sorry. That was something that we had talked about at, uh, meetings, and I know they have, like, a steering committee meeting as well. Um, we talked about possibly noting that on the map, that that could be, for lack of a better term, a rest area or stop. I know the Borough in the future is looking at, you know, talking about as part of their comprehensive plan in downtown, possibly making that like, um, a, an M S four type of parking lot for downtown and getting some credits for that too, so that can be something that can be connected with, like, going green and those. But I did bring that up at one of the, uh, Liberty Bell Trail meetings, just about making that maybe a designated spot on the trail for parking, so someone could park and walk halfway, maybe park in the Borough and then finish up to Franconia back, if they didn't want to do the whole trail. So, that was something that they noted in their notes.
Where was that?
That is the, uh, parking lot downtown, the Settle Lot? Yeah, yeah, next to the railroad station.
Any other questions for Assistant Manager? Now, we'll continue with business and discussion items. First is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, recognizing American Region Vote number nine thirty-three on their seventieth anniversary coming up. Charter was granted October of forty-six.
If you will be attending, I believe there's an invitation, you might see in your last package, if you're interested in attending, uh, let myself or Mike know, you can let somebody know. Uh, I did a resolution for this on nicer paper, so I'll be putting that in a folder and somebody can present it at, uh, the, their celebration. So, if anybody's interested in attending, I just follow that up in email tomorrow to you all with the date.
That was not the one.
Okay.
Who talks for them?
Yeah, I printed it out there, I didn't have to make a signature.
Okay, so it's on for action. Next is Resolution twenty twenty-one twenty, recognizing American Municipal Power on their fiftieth anniversary. And they started off in seventy-one. And up to six hundred and fifty thousand customers through Ohio, Pennsylvania, Michigan, Kentucky, Virginia, West Virginia, Indiana, Maryland, and Delaware.
And the, uh, President of, uh, ACT, that, actually, F P M E A is fully comped, like, we've already made the presentation. And then there was one of the, and we discussed that in front of, uh, P M E A Business Committee.
So, this will be on for action also?
Uh, we can, and that's also done on nicer paper, you guys can send it, and Mike and I will be attending the conference virtually, but we did sign up to the conference and will be attending. And, um, I can mail that to Jody Allen, so she, she can make a presentation for that.
Perfect, thank you. And Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one has started, recognizing Public Power Week. And that is from October third to the ninth. This is the thirty-fifth annual Public Power Week. And again, when you read the, uh, A T P A magazine, and you see some of the other municipalities and cities that are public power providers, see, there's two thousand throughout the United States. Park is being, uh, at Los Angeles. Another one on for action?
Public power serves over forty million users.
And another recognition, Resolution twenty twenty-one twenty-two for fire prevention, which also is October third through tonight. Specifically, if I try to hold it open announce, Tuesday or Wednesday about noon?
Yeah, I didn't hear anything, but again, that was printed on the paper, I'll put it in, and if, if they do, if someone could be there to please present them with the resolution, that would be appreciated. I will let you know, uh, if they have a date in mind for that evening.
And the next item is, uh, bid for rock salt for this upcoming winter season of twenty-one twenty-two. And pigbacking with, uh, Montgomery County Consortium, also on for action. Letter from our engineers recommending, uh, a bid from Norton Salt. And we touched on, uh, through, uh, the birth memorandum from Lindsay, the walkthrough for twenty-twenty-one, so, yes. Please give her our blessing to go forward. And a new topic here, take some time to talk about Act Fifty and the, uh, sample ordinance which deals with, uh, hole attachments and some infrastructure that the Borough owns.
So, so after, uh, had the P M E A conference, uh, our, our solicitor for, for the association consultant, a gentleman, Sam Wyver, presented this to, uh, membership. And one of the, one of the discussion items that I had had with Sam, uh, post this, this presentation was, how long did it take you to review the state statute? He said, well, we didn't get done reviewing the state statute that was adopted in, uh, the end of July until August. So, it was part, it was part of other legislation. So, they had to review it and then make sure that what they proposed for the P M E A members did not conflict with the, uh, state, state statute, which is, which is, were obligations. So, uh, but furthermore, the, the consulting, um, team that we have, lobbyist, uh, Joe Ulliana and his group, uh, Ulliana Associates, along with P S A B and P M E A, interacted with the legislature to, uh, put these guidelines in for additional electric systems. So, this is geared, this is geared for us, as Kate noted in the discussion on, as Kate briefly. Uh, this is geared towards the P M E A members. Uh, the, the part of legislation that was put in there, and this ordinance that you're going to be hearing about was geared specifically for, uh, P M E A members. So, I'll leave it to Kate to, to Kate.
Can I introduce the mic change? Or, or can you?
Hey, hey, you can say that after that, hold on, I don't mind standing.
Good. Any other questions? Good. All right, first thing is, I did draft this, and I have two, two changes that I want to suggest to you. But secondly, I do recommend to move forward with it and authorize advertising for your regular October meeting. Because if you don't do it by the end of October, you may lose the chance to do it. If you do the ordinance that was prepared for P M E A members, and something turns out not right later, we can always amend it, okay? But if we don't do it, we may lose the chance to have local regulations. I had read about the bill or a combining bill, because the townships were kind of upset that the state preempted their ability to say where these, um, small wireless, uh, features can be located. And another township that I was listed for, I remember a big fight over, uh, a wireless company wanting to put a new pole in and just sticking these little things on it. Their explanation was, when somebody has a birthday party and everybody has their cellphones on taking pictures, you need more wireless coverage than you have, and we can get you more by putting these things not on towers, but on poles. The unfortunate thing was, the place they chose to put the poles, one of the least, was right in front of somebody's picture window. And, um, and I believe that the state has preempted the township's ability to, to do that. The good thing is for us is, we already have poles, and the wireless, uh, organizations have been paying people who own poles, like Pico and P P N L, to put their stuff on their poles. And so, this does give us the ability to charge permit fees, which is only fair since your poles are owned just as well as Pico or P P N L own their poles. So, we definitely should do this, we definitely should charge the fees that they allow us to charge under the state law. Let me just tell you the two things that I have an issue with, and if I can change them, and I'll have to read the act myself, I will. Um, the first is that on page five, they have something called exempt facilities, and they say the Borough may shall not, shall not require an application for the following work. And it's basically if you want to put one of these little facilities on a wire that's already existed between two poles. I want to look that, because the truth is, you own the wires too, in most cases, here in the Borough. I mean, those are electric wires. And so, we, I would not want to exempt anybody for that. Now, the other exemptions are okay, routine maintenance work or replacing, um, a small wireless facility with another small, smaller wireless facility, that's okay, I'm sure that that's something that's preempted. Um, but I want to see whether we take out the exemption for the, for the wires, because as I said, it's possible that your wires are some other cable company or something like that. But we won't know that unless they make an application and tell us that, okay? The other thing is, on page thirteen, it says, if requested by the Borough, each small wireless facility co-located on a municipal pole shall be identified by an identifying marker and banned. I think we want them all on, on, we want them all identified. We don't want to have to request people to do that. If a storm comes through, three yards of pole down, and, and one of these things is on it, we got to know whose, whose facility is in case they need to be notified or something like that. Or if we want to change where we're going to put the pole, we have to notify them. So, those are the two changes that I would suggest, uh, that, that I make in this ordinance, plus filling in Hatfield Borough everywhere. Um, and, and then I think we should move forward with this, because, you know, like I said, we can always, can always amend it, but if we don't move forward with it and get it passed by the end of October, um, it could take, uh, we might not have the ability to do it. Now, the ordinance also calls for design standards, and there are none in here. So, maybe the Utilities Committee can think about that. I was thinking design standards, going back to the problem I had in the township, where they want to put a pole right in front of somebody's picture window. You might want the pole, the facilities to be higher than twelve feet, because you don't want somebody walking down the sidewalk by bigger ones than these things. They can be as high as fifty, but there's no bottom level. So, maybe the, the Utilities Committee should look at design standards. We can refer to design standards here, adopt them by resolution later, okay? And, and get that done, so that if there's things that are different for boroughs, you know, than, than townships, that we've already accounted for that. And one thing that is different for a Borough is the walk. And one thing that is different for a borough is the walkability of our sidewalks and the fact that we have poles and wires on sidewalks. And what we don't want are these things up in somebody's hand or looking ugly or something like that, or hair or things like that. But I'm sure those are things that works could probably help us with as well. In any event, my recommendation is, let's pass this by the end of October with those two changes I just suggested.
Would that really be free because we're going to say in there that we're going to specify from a design standard, they're going to put it where they can be located, height of the ground, things like that? Some of that criteria?
Yeah, there's already something in here that says, if the borough has design standards, you got to follow the design guidelines, okay? And the state law says they have to be technically feasible. They cannot prohibit the technology and they can't unreasonably discriminate among providers. Like you can't say, you only want vertical and some guys have horizontal wireless facilities, okay? But I do think you could come up with these design standards and say, it's got to be higher than 12 feet or on certain streets, it's got to be higher than 20 feet, you know, or something like that.
Do we know what these facilities, do we have a general idea of how big or what the size of them is?
There's a picture of it in the...
Yeah, I don't have it in mind, but maybe somebody... I'm sure we can Google it and find it or ask.
On page two of the, of the three, I guess.
Yeah, you're right. Little, little thing.
Little ball.
They're not, they're not large. But the problem is, because they're not large, they need a bunch of them. Yeah, you need, what, one tower every mile? You'll have a bunch of these within the borough. And then because there are competing carriers, you're going to have a bunch of these for one carrier, a bunch of these for another carrier, a bunch of these for another. Makes sense to regulate where they are.
And they're going to be electricity powered, so connected to our electricity. So we'll get a, we'll get a point, like, used to be like, well, our engineer will determine how much electric that they communicate will use monthly and we'll short it.
So that's interesting. It doesn't say that maybe we should require they get an electrical permit too if they tend to use electricity. Remember we had somebody just step one up?
We had a company with monitoring gas, gas meters in the area with a virtual, with a trash system. And it stopped it in all our poles, it helped in our electricity.
Right.
With whoever was, the power got shut off and it's not about it.
So the other question real quick, does it define poles? Are we saying that they can only use our existing poles or do they come in and request additional poles?
They can come in and request additional poles, but if they're using your poles, you're limiting the fees you'd be charged and you're limited in turning them down, basically.
Okay.
So that's why we want permits.
Okay. But at the end of the day, if they've come in and want a pole, we can't turn it down if they're, if it's not an expensive pole?
I think the answer to that is yes. And I think I will check the state law on that. And I think also, because you do own the rights of way. The only thing I'm worried about is that you've already given up some of the rights to use our rights of way. Let's see, who's using our rights of way right now? Telephones using it, I don't know who else. And they may choose to locate on a telephone pole as opposed to an electric pole. You know, so that's, you know, we want to see that. We want to encourage them to use our poles if they're going to do it. Because we already know where our poles are and they're obviously not in a place like in front of somebody's picture window for less than 100 years.
Right. And that's what I'm trying to understand is that if they come in, that's another, if we didn't have the, I've got a pole or something on foot in front of somebody, they ended up like re-describing your own. And then when you said if we don't go to this quick, we may lose the opportunity, what does that mean exactly?
Well, apparently the law itself says that if a municipal, municipality can regulate small wireless facilities, if it adopts a regulation by October 28th, 2021. So we got to get this done. Now, like I said, I think we choose to regulate, we pass the ordinance, if we discover we got a problem, we'll fix it later.
Can I just put on for utilities committee a little stuff? We'll have to come up with some standards. Obviously, we won't necessarily do it before we go on this. So if there's any other examples out there about, you know, based on?
Yeah, I believe, first down, I'll check with the other.
And then we should be prepared to move forward with this. And we could get it advertised for the regular meeting in October and have it on the agenda at the workshop to look at the final version and anything like that.
I mean, what's the advertising, 10 days?
I think it's 70 days. The only reason I'm nervous about that is that any land use, municipality, land use ordinance is need two times, 14 days. Okay? But this is not a land, that's, I'm going to, it's not a land use ordinance, I would think. It's not under Municipal 22, it's under its own state law. But I don't want anybody to challenge you. I'm not ready to see that, that's why.
Are you saying put it on October, so that's a motion to advertise? And then you wouldn't, and then advertise it and then if you can't fit it in between them, I mean, it can't be added tonight?
Okay. What's the regular meeting in October?
20th.
20th.
My 14 days apart.
Yeah, I think you can do it, particularly if I got it ready to go.
Yeah, it's a motion to advertise it and then it went into the paper on the 7th, basically.
Right. It would have to be ready.
Yep, yep. Maybe that word, and then if I, if it didn't pass, I could write down and say, cool, I think I've done that.
Right. Right. The only problem is it's not Monday.
Yeah, right.
But we don't need to capture the whole package.
Right.
So we're, November 1st.
So I don't think we chance it to end up in court on that one.
Jenny, can you relate on each? Hurricane Idaho.
So in your package, there was a brief timeline of what happened the night of the storm. Since then, we have participated in several updates from Montgomery County Emergency Services, Amy and I, and have been following all the massive communications between Montgomery County Emergency Services and disseminating that information to social media, borough website, and things like that. We've also responded to several residents that have called directly. President Val Gary did put out a robo-ball and in certain areas, in this area, and directed residents to call municipalities for help, which is fine. Okay, but when you get inundated with, when are you coming to replace my carpet in my basement? That doesn't serve a good purpose, okay? So you have to read, you have to tell people that, well, first of all, you have to go to your homeowners and then, well, I already did my homeowners, so they've covered this. The federal government's not going to replace your carpet. And so that was one of the things that transpired from, if people call in, once that robo-ball hit, we were inundated with calls of, when are you coming to remove my refrigerator from my basement? Or not? But we can give you access to someone that may be able to help with that. And we did. We gave all those phone numbers and websites and outs to all the residents directly that contacted us and through our social media and website services. So as I said earlier, speaking about the stringing up and some of the damage that was basically throughout the borough in different locations. We're doing our best to catch up, solve some of those issues. We'll, now that the federal government has declared Pennsylvania disaster area, we'll take the next steps. We do keep track of everything we're doing, with repairs. We have hired contractors to do some repairs for us. And we're keeping track of the time spent by public works and materials and everything that we have to do for that. And eventually we'll have to participate in that theme, theme of reimbursement process. But as I said to one of the residents today, she said, well, if I apply for a grant for one of these services or how long does it take me to get my money out? Probably two, three years. These major events for municipalities, one, the reimbursement, it takes up to three years perhaps. So it's a slow-moving process, but we'll do the best we can to keep them popping. So any questions?
I have a question, but a comment for you Mike, for Jamie. Steve, you guys, the team, you guys did an absolutely great job. And I saw you out at 11 o'clock that night. I saw Steve driving around. So I know you guys did a lot of work during that event and thank the team for all the effort that they put out.
Thank you, thank you. When Stevie called me, he said, proposal, what was it? He said, just start a group. All that water came from up above, it rained for hours in Allen Town, that's why. Quick enough. And he said, why? Don't worry. Just start it.
It all got your disease fine. Thank you, though.
All right. No other discussion items. We'll go on to old business while our monthly reports are presented. You can see the Highway 8 cash balance is up to $293,830.80, which will be coming down by the end of the year after the payment. Other work that's completed. Is there anything on expenditures for the ESSA checking?
There, we're still negotiating with the city. Terminally, what we owe contractors. We have an issue with the asphalt plants. I don't know if I communicated that to everybody in the past. The asphalt plants were not significant enough that we were relying on the information at all. So we're hoping that our contractors that were on-site, our engineer and our special firm can help us rebuild those, the change orders and all the payment requests that were put in and some of the descriptions and things that we do have. And then the knowledge of people who were here on-site, staff, to rebuild those asphalt that they should be. But the cost with that would basically eat up what we owe our contract. So we had that communication with them and they said, well, let's know how you made that.
What was that for?
For this building.
What areas of the building? So with all the little things that?
Anything like, just a...
Because I remember we had issues with guardrails and walls, you know?
And we had some issues with, that was all taken care of.
Okay.
That was all change orders. We took care of that with those funds, all right? But there was some discussion about the electric work that was done and like the conduit for the two charging stations, do they come through the, what channel? Or what trench, trench?
How did you get back to the building?
So there was a couple of things. And then in one of the offices, some of the internal pipe comes through one of the walls of the office. And that wasn't really delineated totally on those asphalt.
Okay.
So we have to go back and do that. So we're feeling as though the asphalt plant, restructuring of the asphalt plant could actually eat up what they feel is only open. But we have to have that, I have to secure all that information with our engineer and architect before we go back and tell them we cannot get any company. But bringing us forward to what John's requesting, $42,000, is that what it is?
Yes.
There's $42,000 in that account. When can we close that account and use the money? And since it was borrowed money, we have to put it into the fund that actually pays that back as part of the building.
You have to keep it with the project and the budget.
Right. So we would have to put it into our debt service and specifically earmark it for that payment.
The contractor would have forgotten the money if they supplied the asphalt, but they did.
Does that make your...
Yes. You know, I was wondering, you know, glass, any paving that we, repairs that needed to be done.
That was done as a change order, okay? Glass, the maintenance issue was. We can pay for it out now if you want.
Well, that was my point. It would sound like it's restricted cash.
Yeah, but it's restricted to this, the project, which I believe is this building.
Okay. We need to? Looked through the police reports. Public Works Director is here with a few questions. We had a couple of utility blips again. So we're finding some transformers that are holding up, right?
Yeah. You go five years and not have to replace a transformer, you can go five days and not have to replace five.
What was our squirrel issue? I remember last year the bad.
Squirrel, we have, we have, we've really been making out the biggest squirrel.
I haven't heard anything this year, so I'm assuming it was good.
So I think a big attribute to that would be the tree trimming that we've been on top of, the squirrel board that we've really, did a really good job making sure we stayed on top of that as well. And different things as far as even coated, coated drops that come from the primary down to the fuses. Used to be bare copper. Now everything we order has a nice thick insulation coating on it so that it gives even less room for the squirrel to touch. So, I mean, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall a single squirrel issue, but we did have a raccoon issue. So I don't know how far it takes.
It's called fair and capture, I was running on.
Yeah, I had to say something.
No questions already? Other reports? All right, let's get into our action items. First is motion for considering approval of Resolution 2021-19, recognizing urgent meeting post 933 on a 75th anniversary. Motion by Councilor Cresser, second by Councilor Ferguson. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion's been approved, thank you. Motion for approval, considering approval of Resolution 2021-20, recognizing American Municipal Power's 50th Anniversary. Motion by Councilor Cresser, second by Councilor Ferguson. Any questions? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's been approved, thank you. I have a seed motion for considering approval of Resolution 2021-21, recognizing public power. Motion by Councilor Cresser, second by Councilor Ferguson. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thank you. Motion to consider approving Resolution 2021-22, recognizing fire prevention. Motion to consider approving resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two recognizing fire prevention. Motion by Councilor Ferguson, second by Councilor Lewis.
Yeah.
All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Good question.
It was pretty quick up until then, I guess.
When you get to that Ken and Steve, that's like, what are these going to do on Thursday?
And we have a motion for considering approval of awarding the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two rock salt bids of Morton Salt Incorporated at fifty-eight hours per non-delivered ton and at fifty-eight hours, thirty-three cents per delivered ton.
I'll pay it.
Motion by Councilor Cresser, second by Councilor Ferguson.
I got it, question on that. Are we, uh, should we have an excess of salt last year that we're going to go with?
As of right now, we have over a hundred tons of salt in our bed. Which, you know, if you listen to other things, it doesn't sound like a lot, but for us it is. But no matter what, we're still going to have to get more, depending on what we...
Right, right.
This salt bid is for the whole county.
Okay.
We've, one, one municipality has to be the sponsor of the salt bid. So actually, we're all put it on this year. And the other municipality that was willing to do it, uh, that had an issue. The person couldn't get it, couldn't do it. I don't know, so it was an issue. So we, given being the president of the consortium, put on this year. So, uh, this is for all the municipalities. Now, we're going to have to, whatever they said they want to pay, we respond.
Right, right, okay. No, I just want to get an update. Sorry, the director. Yeah, no, I'm just curious where we're at, like, allowed to, we didn't even want to sweep off, so...
Yeah, we, we had that three-day storm that hurt us, but other than that, we're good.
Not going away. Any other questions on that motion? If not, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's been approved, thank you. And we have, uh, motion for approval payment of the bill list.
What's missing? What's missing on the bill list? You know?
What?
Yeah, what?
So payment, uh, it'll be all connected, we'll pay it right away now, that, uh, application. It has to be paid. And you'll see two bills, bills for a bill on the next...
Was it out of line or was it in?
Uh, it's in line. It's the problem said that since, since, uh, July, since the June year ends for transmission plus ended in June, since July, our transmission rates... Our usage, where it is with our transmission...
One question on the second page. Two, two fence for building maintenance, twenty-four hundred eighty-eight dollars.
That was for, um, patching in some holes that we had around the public works facility in our chain like fence. And I don't mean patching in holes as in literal holes in the fence. Uh, sections that there were no fence at all. We've had people rolling around our facility. Yeah. Yeah, the fence walked right up into the string. Yeah, pretty much.
Did you understand her yet?
Yes, I did.
Wait, what the fuck is that?
She's talking about electrifying, because we own our primary.
I was going to say, yeah.
Put twelve thousand volts on it.
I see a solicitor shaking his head right there.
Yeah.
I mean, that wasn't said.
So I had, uh, motion in second. Any other questions? If not, all who's in favor for payment of the bill, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Motion's approved.
Motion to adjourn.
We'll move out to detective session.
Yes, we do. Personnel elimination...